And it is six o'clock and I called this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Unless I see an objection, seeing none, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Seconder, can you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Please rise for those that are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Last week, Dunwoody High School's former football coach, but not former by very much. He had just left in the end of the school year, passed away unexpectedly. And I'd like if council's okay with us to have a moment of silence in Coach Nash's memory. He came in at a time where literally the football coach they had hired left, like in the summer, because the budget wasn't big enough and they didn't have enough players. And he took a position that was going to be difficult and he certainly has rebuilt that program and instilled pride in athletics at Dunwoody High School. So if we could just have a moment of silence in his memory, please. Thank you. Public comment, if you'd like to speak, the cards are on what I call the piano stand in the back of the room and you can drop it off right here with Eric Shealy. John Oul, maybe John Oul, if you'll just approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. I hope you're having a pleasant evening. Appreciate y'all coming out. My public comments, like as we've been going on around for the last couple of years, has to do with the path on peeler. I know that there's a lot of support amongst you all, but we're asking you to please reconsider. There is an enormous amount of opposition amongst our neighborhood and everyone who's affected by it. You know, as we move through this process, one of the things that is concerned a lot of us is the cost of it. You know, $1.7 million for engineering plans. I think per cost mile is going to be close to eight million, I think, if I'm correct. That's, that's a lot. You know, we shouldn't be throwing good money after bad. And just because we spent $1.7 million on engineering plans, that, that's a sunk cost fallacy, right? For say, whoa, we spent this money, we should spend more money. You know, the next, the next piece of this also is, you know, as a resident of the neighborhood, as a dad, you know, I like to go to the park with my son and crossing peeler is a pain in the butt. It just is. It's dangerous. People don't slow down. They don't stop for pedestrians. We don't even have a crosswalk at our street. One of my neighbors, the Haji Simos, is they have four children and their grandparents live in that neighborhood around the corner. You know, the want may be to do a 12-foot wide sidewalk. You can literally drive an Abrams tank down the middle of it's a name is tank is 11 feet, six inches, I believe. It's the size of interstate highway lane. That's a huge chunk of pavement. You know, and to do that, and it's going to end at our neighborhood. What we really need, what the, what the need is, is to have an appropriately sized sidewalk that goes from our street to the park. That's it. You know, financially, it's much more affordable for the city. It's something that's much more tenable. We don't have to worry about putting concrete over 40 something year old infrastructure that's going to have to all be ripped out and replaced in a couple of years anyways. And then we're going to have to do this whole thing all over again. You know, we're looking at years of construction. That's a problem. Another piece of this for me personally, my house backs up the peeler. And, you know, the trees provide a necessary barrier. You know, people unfortunately come screaming down peeler at high speeds. It's just a thing that happens. I like, I spoke about this two years ago now, most. I like to sleep out there with my son and in our tents, a good time. Well, last year my son had surge on his leg. They had to fracture his, his tibia and rotate his foot out. So we're in the backyard just hanging out. He's got his little cast on on his walker, you know, seven years old. And all of a sudden I hear this and a big, big panel van hit one of the trees, ran off the road, hit a tree. And I have it on video on our little ring doorbell. I hear it and I go running for my son. And if it wasn't for that tree, that big ass trucks, use my language, if that big old truck could have come right through and smashed me and my son. Now, a six-foot fence, which is too short, by the way, wherever it's going to be installed, there just isn't enough to stop a truck. It's just not, it's not safe. I'm not going to feel safe to be in my backyard. When I was in high school, I worked anyways. It's just, please reconsider. We appreciate it. It's just not safe. It's not financially tenable.
Thank you. I'm going to really mess up this name, but Peter. If you'll just introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Peter Friedrich. In 2008, a Dunwoody voted to become a city. The driving issue, local control. You did not want DeKalb County making decisions for Dunwoody. You govern yourselves. Senate Bill 375 surrenders that control to foreign governments. Hindu nationalism runs India, India's government. It's a political ideology, not a religious practice. SB 375 weaponizes Georgia's discrimination laws to protect that ideology from criticism. Muslims in India discussing their treatment subjects you to investigations. Kashmir status, you face civil rights complaints. Modi's policies, your employer gets harassment claims against you. India's government does not wait for American laws. They already act here. Chicago City Council considered a resolution on India's human rights record. India's consulate general sent official letters demanding the council drop it, threatened to damage people-to-people relations if Chicago passed it. A foreign government threatening an American city council for considering a resolution. Angad Singh, Chicago journalist covering, covering Sikh and Punjabi communities. Critical of Modi government policies. India's government revoked his overseas citizenship, placed him on a no-fly list. He can't visit his grandmother in Punjab anymore. An American citizen banned from travel for journalism critical of a foreign government. Sam Khan, New Jersey resident, works in tech. His family in India opposed the BJP in local elections. BJP officials visited his parents, told them, tell your son in America to stop posting about Kashmir or there will be problems for you here. Direct coercion of American residents through their families abroad. We are vigilant about CCP operations targeting Uighur activists. We track Russian disinformation campaigns. Why would we ignore the same pattern from India's Modi government? Different uniforms, same playbook. Foreign governments using American institutions to silence critics. Dunwoody fought for local control in 2008. You decide what happens in Dunwoody, not DeKalb County. SB 375 hands foreign governments veto power over what Georgians can say enforced through our own legal system. That is worse than anything DeKalb County ever did. Two steps the city can take. Resolution, Dunwoody opposes SB 375. This city governs itself. Statement to legislators, local control includes control over our own speech. Foreign governments do not get to weaponize Georgia's legal system against us. You fought for independence in 2008. Protect it now. Oppose SB 375. Here's the evidence for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to leave the papers, if you'll just hand them right there. Joe Hirsch, approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
As you of course know, I'm suing the city and several employees for numerous Open Records Act violations because I believe in transparency. And as you will recall, about two months ago, I told you that my lawyer was in poor health, so I was obtaining a new attorney. While you obviously don't like my lawsuit because it exposes the ugly truths about how inept Dunwoody is, that's your prerogative and you can fight all the suggestions I've made for improving transparency in the city. That's your poor choice. But note that my former attorney, Matthew Cardinale, knows more than any of you about open records laws since he was instrumental in actually writing them for the state of Georgia. He's also more accomplished than any of you. He was a homeless teenager who eventually went to law school and on a full scholarship. And he has helped write legislation in several major cities across America because he is an appreciated and knowledgeable individual whose goal it is to hold officials accountable while ensuring that the public benefits, unlike you. I sent you all an email last month telling you that the law firm hired by the city to fight my transparency lawsuit accused my attorney, Matthew, of lying. The city spends hundreds of thousands of dollars with the law firm FMG Freeman Mathis and Gary. And FMG's attorney Wesley Jackson wrote to the DeKalb County judge to say that Matthew was lying about his illness solely to seek a delay in my court hearings. I emailed each of you. And I asked you to apologize because he was in fact ill. None of you responded and none of you apologized. Rather, the city continues to enrich FMG and Wesley for making such vile comments. But Wesley Jackson will soon be facing a bar complaint for violating his professional obligations. Wesley's reckless accusation not only misled the court, but also tarnished the reputation of a respected attorney. Wesley, your hired attorney, has undermined the dignity of the profession, made false statements, and engaged in dishonest conduct, all while being financially rewarded by this council. Wesley Jackson is a disgusting person, a complete scumbag. And since this council continues to employ Wesley, you should contemplate if you are any better than he is. There's an important distinction between disagreements and being foul human beings. And the city has crossed the line. Sadly, my former attorney, Matthew Cardinale, passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was not lying about his health. No one in the city ever apologized for the comments that you made. All of the good he has done in the world in his dying days. And he was still upset that no one in the city could demonstrate an ounce of civility. Matthew was more than just my attorney. He was my friend. And I'm ignoring the three-minute time allotment because I'm going to show Matthew the decency and respect he deserves. And each of you should be reverent and listen. I will now proceed to read Matthew's obituary for you so you can learn more about the man you falsely accused of lying. Yeah, I see you looking at each other. Yes, that's okay. Matthew Cardinale, 44, passed away on September 29th.
Mr. Hirsch, thank you. Your time is over, sir.
Okay, the woman who's speaking right now is the reason we're here.
Joe.
Because, all right.
You can do it at the end of the meeting. You have another three minutes.
Last person you didn't, you didn't do anything to the last person that did this, did you? No, you didn't. He was an effective advocate for progressive change, social change. He drafted some 21 organizations or resolutions that are now law in the city of Atlanta, including laws for affordable housing, criminal justice reform, disability rights, public comment and public participation.
All in favor.
Community benefits, small business and transparency. Matthew was dedicated to his cats whom he loved and adored.
What I'd want to encourage is if we could maybe spend some allocations, I mean, I know the budget's coming out, but spend some time thinking about it, maybe some resources and possibly doing some marketing or advertising to be able to support all these different fantastic restaurants we have here. So we can bring in outside influence, outside traffic from some of the other metro Atlanta areas. I mean, I'm sure some of you guys have gone to dine in Brookhaven and, and the other places. And it's kind of been pretty disappointing. They don't have, you know, we, we have a great, we have a great restaurant scene here in Dunwoody. And I would love to see a little bit more support for them, especially as, you know, just to make sure that they stay afloat. It'd be ideal for our citizens. It'll be ideal for the taxes that we could, we could generate from it. So again, just a repetitive comment, but I do politely end with reminding all of you that the reason we have such a wonderful, robust, robust restaurant environment is all the hard work you guys have been putting in to be able to help these businesses come in and all the other fun stuff. So I thank you for that and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another card? Oh, but first we, I made a mistake. We have to reconvene. So I need a motion to reconvene.
Move to reconvene the meeting?
And a move by Tom, second by Rob, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Hey, Zach Humphreys, you'll have, approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes, sir.
I will respect the three minutes. When Dunwoody first attempted to incorporate in 1971, the Dunwoody Homeowners Association introduced a proposal that defined the boundaries of Dunwoody as solely the Hidden Branches suburb. So why the suburb? The Hidden Branches suburb was built just a few years beforehand for many fleeing Atlanta and, and other integrate, integrating regions of the United States. This was because the Spurrel family no longer found it financially feasible to continue the, the practice of sharecropping in Dunwoody. And thus the children of Stevensborough began selling off land to get their coin. With supply meeting the, the demand, the Hidden Branches was formed the nucleus of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. The Rodney G. Wells and those at the Dunwoody Homeowners Association in their haste to separate themselves from a more egalitarian world, found that charging a flat fee of $10 per, per household of property taxes per year would not be enough to pay for a police force that would have, yes, protected their land and capital, but also ensured that their little segregationist bubble would never be popped. But it's not like that wasn't an uncommon practice in Dunwoody at the time. We were a sunset sundown town. After the Georgia State House of, House of Representatives expressed concern of the financial viability of this proposed Dunwoody, Rodney G. Wells, the first president of the DHA and the brother of the principal of the whites-only Dunwoody Elementary School, proposed that through some legal trickery, they could expand Dunwoody to also include the soon-to-be-built perimeter mall. I believe soon to be print-built, but promises are just words and the proposal was denied. What the Dunwoody Homeowners Association realized in that moment is that if they were to create a city of Dunwoody, one that solidified the supremacy of North Dun, of the North Dunwoody elite, where they paid minimal property taxes, but still had enough for a police force. Dunwoody needed to extract wealth from the commercial South to subsidize the North. And I'm not really shocked that they weren't invited onto the board of the CID for this reason. PCID. So we exist today with the homestead evaluation frees renters and businesses primarily in the South pay three to four times the effective rate of city property taxes than legacy homeowners in the North. Combine that with the CID in areas in South Dunwoody, pay nearly seven times the effective rate of total property taxes for projects that help develop the city. But the party is over. At some point, we need to gather more financial funds because the North cannot extract wealth from, from the South Dunwoody. Our revenues will eventually not meet expenditures and change will need to happen. So now we have the 2025 to 45 comprehensive plan, which I will respect this time in talking.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the that concludes the cards I have for the session of public comment. There'll be another session at the end of the meeting. City managers report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, this is the report for October 10th, ending the weekend in October 10th. For the Parks Department, we have the ADA push buttons have been installed at the Spruill Center for the arts to improve corridor access. Also, on the 11th, we had our Grooving on the Green series finale. It was a great event. Many people attended that. And the weather was perfect for that event, so I'm glad that it ended with such a nice turnout. Also for tomorrow, we have our non-verbal communication board ribbon cutting at Brook Run Playground. We have the trunk or treat coming up October 30th, the day before Halloween. And also on November 11th is our Veterans Day Ceremony. And during that, I know several of y'all have gone out and looked at the Veterans Day Monument, how it's coming on for our new Veterans Day Monument that goes right there along with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And so they'll be all together. Also, we have holiday lights coming up on December the 2nd. So it's that time of year to start preparing for that. The Parks Staff welcomed the Dunwoody 101 Trolley at Two Bridges Park on September the 30th. I'll refer a little bit more to the Dunwoody 101. It was our second time doing Dunwoody 101. Great turnout of about 25 people that we had. That's what the bus holds. So that's the limit for that, for the trolley. And they got to go around the different areas of the city, but one thing they looked at was the splash pad. They learned more about the park. One thing we're learning from the crew that goes through Dunwoody 101 is they don't know about some of the new parks. They don't know about the High Street area and that part of the city that's developed. It's, it's been a very good group of citizens both times to learn more and more about our city and to understand all the, the new elements and what it takes to operate the city internally. Also, staff earned recognition at the annual Georgia Recreation of Parks Association District Banquet on October the 1st. David Alexander received the Maintenance and Operations Network Award. Kate Borden received the Administrative and Leadership Network Award. And Rachel Waldron and Greg, received the Greg White Distinguished Professional of the Year. Also received the Agency of the Year for the fifth year in a row. So congratulations to the Parks Department and to Rachel and her staff for that great achievement. Keep up the good work. Also, the recreational staff is, supported the Pizza with Police event on October the 9th. And they had a bounce house there and yard games for people to attend. And as I mentioned earlier, the Veterans Memorial, the Soldiers' Cross, the lighted poles have all been delivered. We also have, we'll have a flame in there, an eternal flame. The concrete work was finished the week of October the 6th and the granite's arriving this week to finalize that part of the park. Our contractor promise is by November the 1st, so we're on track for that. But the 11th, of course, is Veterans Day. The, the police, we have on September the 3rd. We had, we hosted a public safety cadet open house at the Annex. We had attendees learned about the program, which is designed for young adults aged 14 to 21. Also, Chief Carlson has partnered with the district attorney, Sherry Boston, for the National Store Walk a month at Perimeter Mall. These walks help build relationships with businesses, increase awareness and strengthen safety in our community. And that's been a, a big motivation of our police. And we, we love the fact that the district attorney's working with us on that as well. The, we also partnered with DeKalb Fire Safe Process School and the Dunwoody City Council to host the community bike ride and Dunwoody Bike Rodeo at Brook Run Park back on the 13th of last month. So very busy in that aspect. Some of the other statistics, there's a crime statistics link within your report. We have some entering autos, person hit by auto, DUI, normal stuff that we deal with on a weekly basis. It can, it occurs within the city. But that report gives a more comprehensive look at those items. We have in Public Works, the new crosswalk with the pedestrian refuge island. And flashing beacon was installed at Roberts Drive at Wildcat Park. Also, the Cherry Hill to Edison Path. The construction is substantially completed and the path is now open to the public. We're going to be planting trees later this year. We also, the adopted stream program is alive and well. And we have our, there's a, the macro in vertebrae's training will be October the 18th. There's a link for that. And also the great Dunwoody cleanup is scheduled for November 1st. Paving, all the paving's been complete for 2025. We paved 12.2 lane miles on 27 city streets this year. GDOT has also resurfaced Cotillion Drive. And then we have, DeKalb County is also installing a sewer line in the Bend Creek neighborhood. And so that's going to have traffic delays along Dunwoody Club Drive for the next 12 months. And also the waterline replacement at Roberts Drive and Stanley Dunwoody Road, the main road replaced in that area. And that's going to be about a 12-month project as, as well. And that, here again, that's underway, both those are underway. And there will be some delays in that area, so just be mindful of those as you travel through. Please be patient and you will make it through there or plan an alternative route. We have also within the Communications Department, the Fall Dunwoody Digest arrived in the mailboxes. And also here again, I want to thank all the staff and the Communications Department and also the council for allowing us to do the Dunwoody 101 courses. This year we'll continue those. There's, there's a waiting list still for them in the future. But we learn more each time, as I mentioned earlier, and the citizens have thoroughly enjoyed those and learning about the city. I encourage people to sign up for those. It is a limited number, but we do keep, keep a list of who would like to attend. We have a, a link within the report for the Dunwoody Stories for September 2025. That's within, in there as well. The city held its hazardous waste, the household hazardous waste recycling event on September the 13th. It was the largest event we've had since the pandemic with 504 vehicles dropping off almost 50,000 pounds of materials. That's a weight increase of 57% over last year. The city's also received approval for the 2025 through 2045 comprehensive plan, which I'll have in front of you tonight. But the Georgia Department of Community Affairs But the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission have approved that that plan. The urban planners of the state elected the Community Development Director, Richard McLeod, to the Board of the Georgia Planning Association. So congratulations, Richard, for that honor. The Building Division has completed 400 inspections. And also, as y'all have noticed, it's a change of the landscape, which is the construction of the new living spaces furniture store at Ravinia Parkway. And so that's ongoing now in that area. Economic development, working with the Development Authority and Regency to expand place making, investment in the Dunwoody Village Courtyard, and also working with the Dunwoody Art Commission and Parks Department to finalize plans for the temporary sculpture exhibit to be hosted at Wildcat Park. Under Finance, we have tonight in front of us, which is the the Mayor and City Managers Proposed Operating in Capital Budget. That's been on the website since August the 27th. And we have had a workshop for that on the 29th of September. We went over the capital, the CIP plan, and we have our, we had our review for that on Monday, October the 6th. And then also, we have our first public hearing on the plan tonight. And then the second public hearing will be on Monday, October the 27th. That follows the adoption on that same date. Just so the public knows, the budget has to be adopted by the end of October, otherwise it reverts back to the proposed plan of the Mayor and City Managers Budget. Risk Manager is working with the IT Department to build and implement a business continuity plan. That's something that we want to be sure we have on here in case there was ever something that happens and I want to be sure we have a way the operations continue to work. A nice fact that we have here is an ATM machine to be installed in the lobby of City Hall. There's been a demand for the our court patrons that would like to have cash available to pay the fines, they can avoid any credit card fees. So that's been something that they've asked for. And so we're working with our with Truist Bank to put that in the lobby right outside the doors. The final note is municipal court. We disposed of 482 cases last month, reset 22. And and the month of September was our amnesty month. And that hearing was October the 9th that we had. And we did close out a lot of cases that here again, that's a public service we provide to people to try to say, hey, come in, get your fees cleared up without any additional penalties and without any kind of warrant or any other issues can all be cleared up during that amnesty period. That concludes my report. I'm glad to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
So there was one event that I had to ask Rachel, our Director of Parks and Rec, what it was. It's on November 2nd. And it is, I have to read it to make sure I have it right. It is the Get Your Goat Pumpkin Eating Contest. So I had to ask Rachel what it is. And I think I actually can't wait to see it. It is the Get Your Goat Rentals, who clears a lot of things for us and asked if they could bring their goats in for a pumpkin eating contest. People bring their pumpkins after Halloween and they have some masher on site that makes them into pie and then kids vote on which goats can eat the most. I think that's just, I mean, that just has Parks and Rec fun written all over it and I can't wait for that. The other thing I can't wait for, and I have a plea to the weather gods to have on November 11th, to please have it be beautiful day so we can have the Veterans Day Ceremony outside in our brand new Veterans Memorial. So please, 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 everybody fingers crossed, toes crossed, that we are going to be able to celebrate our veterans at our new memorial.
Buy a good raincoat. It's pretty much going to have to be rain or shine, sorry. So buy a good raincoat. I mean, outside, go ahead, Joe. Right.
It's going to be rain or shine.
Rain or shine.
Oh, wow. Okay. The 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 Tilly Mill-Monvern Intersection Project, which I'm just trying to keep my pulse on that thumb on the pulse, finger on the pulse. Do we have any kind of guide? I I see what that said about, you know, utility, et cetera, stormwater finalization, but just really not to go really low level, but where really are we and when is, when will we, you know, what's it look like?
Yeah, we're the current schedule, we're shooting for bidding it at the end of the year for bidding it for construction.
And how's it coming with DeKalb County Water? You're going to have, they're also coordinating to remove, rinse, building, put a new water main underneath there, right?
Yes. They they've been working on their design plans and I think we're supposed to get those in the next month.
And we're figuring out how to put the base substrate in differently than we did in the
Yeah, they have a different standard now.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. End of the year, potentially having that out to bid.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I I just have a question looking at the crime report and I don't know if you'll be able to answer it, but looking at property crimes, which is pretty much the crimes that happen in the city, they're way down compared to last year. Any insight on to why? I mean, or I'm hoping it's just that we scared everybody off because you're so good, but
A lot of it has to do with that technology. And we are at the highest staffing level that we've been at. So obviously, with the more presence that we have out on the streets, along with technology, the criminals know, they know that we have technology to follow up. So our solvability factors have gone up as well and fallen above these crimes. So kind of a multiple.
Excellent. And just for folks that aren't seeing the report I'm seeing, I mean, it's down 17%, down 26%. I mean, these aren't just double digits. These are significant decreases in property crimes. So well done. Thank you.
Anything else? Tom?
Yeah, I'd just like to give a quick shout out to some of the staff, Richard McLeod, for his appointment to the State Board of Directors position. That's that's a nice feather in your cap and good work there. And also our park staff for their recognition. That's they do a tremendous job for the city and it's great when when that work is recognized at a at a state level. And also another thank you to to the park staff for the the final Grooving in the Green. It was it was a full overflowing house at that Brooklyn Amphitheater on Saturday night. It was a lot of fun. So thank, thank, a lot of hard work goes into making those events happen. So just want them to know we appreciate it.
Yep, there were thousands of people there. It was pretty fantastic. Anything else? I, for the first time in a million years, I'm getting a real pumpkin so I can take it to feed the goats. So, all right, any anybody else? All right, seeing none. That ends the section. Now we have a public hearing. I think Sharon, do you get to read it? Yeah.
Item number two is a first read for MS MMSP 25 dash 01, the applicant Matthew Phillips, seeks a major master sign plan for 50 Campus Way, 100 Campus Way, 200 Campus Way, 244 Campus Way and 300 Campus Way, which is Campus 244 Allegra de Norte.
Hi, everyone. So the major master sign plan that you all have before you tonight is part of a process that we adopted about two and a half years ago. And so many of you may remember that Kingswood Church in Emory went through this process in early 2024. As a quick refresher, the process was designed to ensure visual consistency among signs for larger campuses. And then it also allows certain specific requests for deviation from the code to allow for creativity and unusual circumstances. And so there are three different avenues. Master sign plans without any exemptions just go through the permitting process. Small exemptions can be handled administratively by community development staff and then larger exemptions go before you all. And so this graphic shows two avenues for exemptions from the code. And the criteria for visual consistency needs to be based on at least three of the following factors, so color scheme, lettering style, materials and location of signs to be posted on buildings. And so the one before you all this evening is for Campus 244. So this went before Planning Commission last month. There were no public comments and they voted unanimously to recommend approval for it with the condition that a specific sign labeled PG2, which was located on the parking deck and parking deck, excuse me, and facing I 285, be removed from the application. And so subsequently, the applicant has removed that from the application. You won't see it before you this evening. So Campus 244 is 12 acres and it was formerly developed with an office building that was used as the Goldkiss headquarters. In 2024, it was redeveloped with several buildings and expanded with a hotel, office and restaurant space. It's located off of Perimeter Center Parkway and is visible from I 285. As part of the redevelopment of the property, several tenants have received sign permits for signage that has been installed on the property, such as Element Hotel, CT Cantina and Taqueria and Insight Global. Additionally, Beyond has submitted for a sign permit that has not yet been approved because these signs met the standards of the sign code. Staff has not required a master sign plan up till this point. Now they are making, now they are requesting exemptions and so it's coming before you all. So here's the site plan here. It's a little bit convoluted, but the blue star indicates new signs that meet the code requirements, no exemptions required. And the red signs indicate new signs that need exemptions from the code. And any sign without a star has already been approved. And so they're exceeding the maximum count for three sign types, exceeding the maximum height for five individual signs, maximum sign area for one individual sign and reducing the minimum height for one individual sign. So I'll start with the parking garage signs. So this is the parking garage that's, let me go back to the site plan to indicate it. So the parking garage is located where my mouse is here on the bottom left. The office building and restaurant space is over here. CT Taqueria is indicated by these sort of hatched lines over here to orient yourself. And then the Element Hotel is over here on the left. Additionally, there's a there's a vacant restaurant space here that's not filled in with a tenant yet. So on the parking garage, they're requesting two building wall signs. Both of these are in compliance with the size requirements, but they're a little bit taller than what would normally be allowed per code. But staff finds that the that the height of them really does make sense for the design of the building. On the office building, they're proposing one building wall sign that will be again exceeding the maximum height above grade, which is 30 feet. So that can be pretty restrictive for these taller buildings. So that's what that's the reason for the exemption there. And then CT Cantina and Taqueria wants to add two building wall signs on the same facade and two awning signs and that's exceeding the sign count for both. You can see those details down here. So those are all pretty small. And then they want to add a projecting sign that's located at 8.67 feet above grade. The minimum height above grade is nine feet. So they're requesting an exemption there, but staff sees no safety concerns with that height. And the applicant is also proposing two canopy signs for the freestanding restaurant building signs. And so as you may have noticed, a couple of these don't have any design submitted yet. That's because they're wanting to just sort of reserve these spaces for future tenants that they might have come in. And then they're also requesting these two wayfinding signs. Wayfinding signs can only be three feet tall. And so both of these are exceeding the maximum feet at four and six feet respectively. So the major master sign plan proposal from Campus 244 addresses visual consistency through the color scheme, lettering style, materials and location of signs to be posted on buildings. The color scheme is consistent throughout the proposal, using several dominant colors that are paired with complementary accent tones to ensure visibility and cohesion. The proposed signs use the same font complementary accent tones and a typographic hierarchy such as bold headers and lighter subtext to maintain brand consistency. All the proposed signage is constructed from durable weather resistant materials such as powder coated aluminum. So overall, staff finds that the proposal does provide visual consistency with the proposed and existing signs. The development consists of multiple buildings with a mix of uses, creating the need for signage to indicate the location of each tenant. Additionally, the design of many of the buildings requires wall signs as a high, at a higher height than is allowed per code in order to sort of, you know, be seamless architecturally with the design of the building. So staff finds that unique circumstances exist for Campus 244 that necessitate the requested code exemptions. And all of the proposed signs are of a consistent size and scale to existing sign, the signs in the surrounding area nearby, there's the State Farm Development, the Perimeter Expo Mall and Perimeter Mall. All of those have have similar signage of a of a consistent sort of shape and size to this proposed signage. So staff doesn't feel that there's anything sort of going above and beyond there. And additionally, the two proposed wayfinding signs appear to be at a reasonable scale for pedestrians and for the premises. And so overall, staff is supportive of Campus 244's major master sign plan. So we would request approval and that would just approve the entire sign plan with all of the designs of the signs and and everything of that sort.
Is the applicant here? Do you have anything you'd like to add? Yeah, please.
Really, I would really just like to add, we really appreciate working with Richard and the staff in Allegra. As we got into the ordinance from multiple mayor, and you're familiar with the site, some of the ordinances really weren't applicable to this development. We worked very closely with them to craft our plan. As she mentioned, we modified it after our last meeting to meet staff's recommendation. So really appreciate it as you know, where we're situated on 285, we are at the the front door of Dunwoody. So we have tenants like Insight Global, they really want that presence that they have there. They have their headquarters right behind us. So we appreciate them working with us. So we felt that we crafted a plan that meets staff requirements and hopefully your approval. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll come back if we have questions. We have to do the public hearing first. I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is opened. If anyone would like to speak in opposition of this application, you'll have, there's 10 minutes for each side. All right, seeing no one, if anyone would like to speak in favor of this application, there'll be 10 minutes per side. Introduce yourself, please, when you get to the microphone.
I'm all right. I don't know why y'all make people jump through all these hoops with sign codes because just off the top of my head, I wasn't even planning on thinking about it. The city doesn't enforce half of the codes for signs that you write and and make people go through this. Just off the top of my head, next door, there's an apartment complex that's got artificial balloons that's been there for years. Next door to that, the All You Can Eat Sushi routinely puts up signs and grain opening signs. Spirit Halloween covers too much of its windows and is permissible. The All You Can Eat Brazilian Steakhouse has sandwich board signs that are too far from the entrance. Walk Provisions has a now open sign that's illegal. I could just go down any road and point out hundreds of signs that y'all don't enforce, but you make people waste time, which is just symbolic of how poorly run this city is and how you just waste people's time and money. Why do you do this? What what are you here for? Like, all you do is protect each other and protect yourselves and your allies while just causing harm to the public when it's not necessary. You don't enforce the laws you write, so why bother? Look at yourselves in the mirror and say, what are we doing? I mean, they drive by our public. Our code enforcing people drive by these signs hundreds of times a day and ignore them because you want people to rat out each other in this city. You want people to be the escape goods, what the city looks like you're the good guy. You say that y'all don't enforce things unless someone complains. Is that really, you want people to be tattletales and to snitch on each other in this city? Because otherwise, you don't do your jobs. Can you honestly say, oh, yeah, we do a good job with sign up for? I mean, we hear, oh, we picked up 20 signs each month, whatever, from that stupid report that no one listens to. But otherwise, it's a joke and it just represents what you in this body is capable or incapable of doing. And it's a shame that this city could be so much better, but you won't listen and y'all are just stubborn and you are a waste of time in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the of the major sign chain plan? All right, seeing none, I close the public hearing. And council discussion, questions of staff or applicant? Okay, well, who's who's coming up to manage this? Okay, thank you.
Just a couple things, just so I can clarify on my mind. All the existing signs that were built like in code, so they didn't require this plan, do they have to be changed or are they fine as is?
They're fine as is.
Okay. And then from what I could tell, all of the exemptions are height and placement for better visibility and there's no lighting exemptions at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. This process doesn't allow for lighting exemptions as all, there's no path for lighting exemptions.
Okay. Great, thank you. That was it. Just
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, just just general comment. Yeah, I think there's no problem at all with this. I look forward to the wayfinding signage because I know some people that I've sent over that way and they get a little confused when they first get there if they're not familiar with the campus. Once you're there, you kind of get the hang of it, but I think the the wayfinding will be a great addition as well. So thank you. Once you're there, you kind of get the hang of it, but I think the, the wayfinding will be a, a great addition as well, so thank you.
And the mural that you've done on the subway, on the Marta um track, I don't bridge, whatever is, is very, very, very nice and on the, uh it's a very nice touch and a great entrance to a fantastic project. Anybody else? Alright, so when does this come back?
November tenth.
Okay, we will see it on November tenth. Um thank you. Uh Sharon, I think you read the next, just let me, just whenever you're ready.
Item number three is an ordinance to amend the zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero one, three. Eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero two, one, and eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero two, eight. In consideration of zoning case RZ twenty five dash O five for eighty four perimeter center east.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um the request this evening is to modify the conditions of the previous rezoning and the special land use permit, as well as add an additional component to the special land use permit for a drive through restaurant. The applicant has updated the site plan significantly um to accommodate the drive through plan. Um however, the applicant has requested deferral um of the first read and the public hearing to the November tenth, twenty twenty five meeting to allow them additional time to rework their site plan. Um so, you know, I'm happy to present on the current application, but I anticipate it will change. Uh if you guys have questions, um you know, for the applicant this evening, um he and his representative are here to answer those.
Okay, so.
There's a second ordinance, there's a SLUP that goes along with this, that's in the same heading.
Oh, okay, so you need to read that too?
Yes, sorry. An ordinance to amend the conditions of zoning of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero one, three. Eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero two, one, and eighteen, three forty seven, zero one, zero two, eight. In consideration of a special land use permit, SLUP twenty five dash O four for eighty four perimeter center east.
Okay, alright. Um just ask.
Um I, um to our city attorney, I, I guess, and I'm just quite questioned, Madeline, you said that they anticipated significant changes. So my question is, should we send it back to the planning commission or should we just defer it as a ask?
So the.
Good evening. The applicant just uh said that they're waiting on updated renderings, not a, a major change to the site.
Okay.
So that was all, so November's fine.
Okay, so can we have to vote on this deferral or table?
I think that's in y'all's prerogative, be advertised for a public hearing, that's why I wanted Richard to come forward. Because there may be, there may be somebody from the public ear that would like to speak, I don't know.
Okay, do we have to go through the whole presentation?
Well, it's been advertised for a public hearing in deference to the public, I would open up, see if anybody has any comment, and then you can take up the request.
Okay, but do we have to go through the presentation? Uh does anybody have, I'm gonna start by say, go ahead, I'm gonna ask if anyone has any, what?
So usually, uh if it, it is deferred, you defer it entire thing until a specific date, time and place so that it carries over, we don't have to advertise it again, because the public hearing will be at the next meeting.
That makes zero sense to me, that you would not have to advertise it again, seriously, because if, that makes zero sense to me. Sorry, it doesn't, because why, how would someone know? I don't know, Richard, that didn't make much sense to me, but that's not even why I was asking. Alright, I think I have to open the public hearing. Alright, I am op- It's like fairy noise. Um if, it's not mine. Um if uh I'm opening the public hearing, uh unless there's an objection, seeing none. If anyone from the public would like to speak in opposition of this project, uh you'll have ten minutes. Seeing none, if anyone would like to be opposed from this pro- uh speak in opposition of this project. Oh, I said opposition, uh speak in favor of this project, uh you can approach the microphone. Alright, are you gonna speak? You'll have ten minutes.
I was just gonna, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Den Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, three oh three, oh nine. Just, I just reiterate the request for the referral and I'll reserve my time.
Okay. Um alright, seeing none more, I close the public hearing, any further discussion? Uh go ahead.
Just the observation that assuming we defer this, that there will still be two more opportunities for the public to comment, right? Is the next, the new first read and then a subsequent meeting will be the second read.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, this, this isn't one of your only two opportunities, this is.
No, it starts over, so maybe it should be readvertised.
For anybody that picks this up later on.
Right, I think it should be readvertised, but, okay, um alright. So I need a motion to defer.
To, to a date and meeting time specific.
November tenth, is that what it is? Okay.
At six P M.
At six P M, okay, that's specific, okay, go ahead.
I will move to defer this um application, public hearing and uh first read to the November tenth, city council meeting at six P M.
Second, move by Tom, second. Move, it's not good, move by Rob, second by Stacy. Any further discussion, hearing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is now deferred. Sharon, whenever you catch your breath and you're ready.
Item number four is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty four, zero three, zero zero five. In consideration of zoning case RZ twenty five dash O six, the forty five hundred North Shallowford Road from O I Office Institution District zoning classification to C one local commercial district.
Good evening again, City Council. So the applicant, uh the Dogwood Veterinary Clinic is requesting a rezoning from O I to C one. If you're maybe not familiar with this site, uh just to orient you to the, to the place. This is the former Emory Medical Building that sits right across the street from Prinochal Park. Um and right across the street from the brand new Emory Office. The property was developed in the late sixties, it's currently zoned O I. This is an office zoning district, it essentially really only allows office and human medical, but not animal medical. Um but it's currently a vacant office building. Um essentially, the Dogwood Veterinary um clinic wants to open up within the existing building. They would essentially refresh the period, uh you know, refresh the appearance and do significant um interior renovations to accommodate um the uh hmm an- animal vet use. Um they're not proposing any significant changes to the exterior. Um the applicant, uh excuse me, the site currently is accessed via two curb cuts on North Shallowford Road. One of those curb cuts is signalized, that's the signal that goes on to um the Prinochal Park Court. Um there is also um a connection to the offices to the rear. Um and so that is a interpersonal connectivity that we would like to maintain as this project goes forward. Uh the one change that we are requesting is that that curb cut uh that is to the south of the property be closed, it's considered nonconforming. Part of the city's access management plan is to get rid of nonconforming curb cuts. Um overall, um the applicant is not proposing any outdoor runs and no animal boarding. All overnight stays are due to the nature of hospital stays, so this isn't a doggy daycare or a boarding facility or a kennel. It is strictly an animal clinic. Um overall, staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um the Georgetown character area does encourage a variety of commercial office civic and residential uses. This is a use that is not um immediately within this area in this part of Dunwoody, so it would be unique in that regard. And there is a need for it in the area. Currently, the O I zoning does not accommodate this type of use, like I said, it's very restrictive, it really only allows um office and human medical. Overall, uh we find that the operation of the animal hospital would be similar to the adjacent office and medical uses. So our recommendation is to uh approve the site um with conditions. Um one of the conditions that I did want to mention specifically is that we would recommend it be approved with no vehicle, vehicle equipment, sales and service uses to be permitted on the subject site. Just because if you don't find vehicular uses to be appropriate along this stretch of um a North Shallowford Road. Um and then again, uh requiring the closure of that curb cut and then formalizing that interpersonal access with an easement. Um overall, if you have any further questions um about the application, I am available. The applicant has also prepared a short presentation um as well.
Okay.
My name is uh I'm one of the doctors at Dogwood. Um thank you for like the time today and uh giving us the time and consideration. Um I'm one of the owners and like I started Dogwood with another veterinarian. Um and then I'll talk about Blue Frog and construction. But uh we started Dogwood in twenty twenty two, uh we have a clinic in Isco. Uh we are now nineteen doctors with ninety support staff. We have uh emergency critical care, internal medicine, surgery, anesthesiology and like oncology, palliative care and cardiology as a part time. Um we are focused, we're like, the doctors who work there also and like have uh and like ownership of the clinic. So we really are focused on patient care and service. Uh we are really um want to improve uh veterinary care and be able to uh provide the service that is needed in the city. Uh to do that, and like we have all grown our space, our current space. So we would like to open a second uh location so that we could include neurology, interventional cardiology, ophthalmology, dermatology. Will continue providing surgery and internal medicine. Uh and the building where uh the Emory Clinic was and like will, will be able to fit all of that. And like and um so we're gonna be repurposing the building. We have a huge investment in like of about five to six million dollars in like churches, we do the inside of the clinic. Uh we're not changing much of the outside else than like repainting, doing land work. And uh but like the inside is gonna be completely redone so that it could accommodate uh the veterinary clinic. Uh this is a floor plan as it is right now. Uh the uh it's kind of busy, I guess. Uh but in like uh we're definitely um committed and like to the patients that we see. We want to make sure that we have the facility that we all proud of, that we could provide the service uh and make sure that it's safe for the pets. Uh we also would like to contribute to the city, we put on the corner there and like a potential um coffee shop. And like we know that you guys are opening the, the bike path in front of us. And uh so we are um saving some space for that and like in the future. And like as we, first we need to open the clinic, uh and then um and like we have space that we are waiting to see how we're gonna grow, how we can better um um and like help the community, and so we'll be able to grow in the next twenty, thirty years with the city uh to provide the service of veterinary medicine and hopefully have a spot for, and like people to come and, and take a break. Have a good coffee and like, and like a local uh coffee shop, uh hopefully in like so that we could really be part of the community and serve and make a, a good purpose. Uh this, this are, uh Blue Frog is going to be the, um it's uh the contractor and like the construction company and like their uh they specialize in veterinary clinic. Uh we wanted to make sure that it's a, a huge investment that we uh and like we make sure that all of the um edit everything that like the city needs and like has surpassed and like it's gonna be done. Uh this is an example of a clinic they just built and like this is the reception area and like the exam rooms. Then this is uh the treatment area where and like you have the pharmacy, you have lab and like it's pretty open uh because of the dogs and like uh then and like you have the surgical, we're gonna have four surgery rooms and then the radiology room. Um it's all inside, we do have uh walking areas outside, but this is a hospital. So it's not that dogs are barking and like they're there because they're hostileized. Um we make sure that when they're there, they're comfortable, we want them to go home as soon as possible. And like so, um it's, it's very different from a vet clinic where dogs are there for grooming or they're healthy and, and like it's uh it's pretty quiet and like uh and so um we, and like we're group of vets that want to, to do what we want to scope for and hopefully we'll be able to make Dunwoody our, our home.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's an objection, I open the public hearing. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is opened, um we will have ten minutes for those in opposed to this application. Okay, I don't see anybody, ten minutes for those uh in favor of this application. Alright, I don't see anybody, so um I need, I'll close the public hearing unless there's an objection, the public hearing is closed. And now we can ask questions or comments, does anybody have one? Catherine.
Whoever wants to talk about this, Dr. Tomas, maybe, is this a, an emergency hospital? Would this be open twenty four hours a day?
Yes, yes ma'am, uh we are part of our clinics twenty four hours and like um and, and it's almost fifty fifty and like fifty percent of our patients are coming through emergency and then fifty percent of our patients are coming through referral uh for specialty care.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, Dunwoody doesn't have one of those, we are, we would be happy to have that.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I'm just gonna make a comment that this seems like a very reasonable request for rezoning.
Animals or humans, go ahead.
Um thank you for uh adding the little bit of the cafe idea. I, I think I have more of a, a couple of staff question um here, um the C one. So again, I'm looking forward to our code cleanup and form base, so it's really easy to find, cuz it's not. So um unless it's in the uh condition, they are, we're gonna rezone them and they would have what is permitted uses as C one. They would be able, i.e. the cafe, that kind of thing.
Correct, retail and uh restaurant would be a permitted use on the site. One note about the conditions and the site itself is the, one of the conditions ties it to the site survey. So essentially tying it to the current footprint and the current layout of the building and the site. So if someone did want to come in in the future, um build an extension or something of that nature. Um you know, change the, the use and do total redevelopment, it would require it to come back to, to council.
Okay, and this is just um more of a commentary, but I would look forward to saying um when we do our code rewrite next year, that I appreciate the applicant, I appreciate your investment. You've, you've done a lot of, this is a lot of investment already on your part of getting all this together. And then now you have to go through this legal bureaucracy here that the city has imposed on you because of our current zoning. And uh it seems to me like I would like to see if we're gonna, you know, they're, they're working on humans, now they're gonna work on, well, humans are animals. Just another species and now we have to get a rezoning. And the burden on the business owner now to go through all this hurdle, I, I, I hope that I hope that in the future, we don't have to do this again and that we have it in our code, that, okay, it's another species of animal. And it's based on the exterior conditions around the surroundings and that we're neutral to the neighbors, but anyway, um thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say, as someone who just had to drive my fur baby to, to cater for these services, I would welcome not having to drive to to cater for these services and would welcome such a business to Dunwoody.
Go ahead.
But Madeline, just because you said something a minute ago, so if a new owner wanted to put on an extension, they would have to come before us again. If the present owner, assuming this passes, once they put on an extension, it still falls within their approved use, correct? They would just have to go through the normal building inspection review process.
Any extension of the building would require a rezoning, you all are welcome to amend that recommended condition.
Okay.
Um.
Alright, okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, no, I I kind of agree with a lot of what's said. I think this is a very good adaptive reuse of a space. We're just gonna be caring for animals and you know, instead of humans there. So I I think that's fine. And I think it's something that is needed here in the city. I just one question probably from Adeline on the on the boarding thing. I I know you said there was gonna be no boarding, but we've had some, does the C one allow boarding to occur if in the future they wanted to add a boarding element to this facility, would they be have that by right with this rezoning?
Yes, so I believe all animal type uses are permitted within C one.
So do do we need to be specific in a condition or do we need to consider a condition for for boarding and outside? That we've, because like I said, we've we've been down this road before.
Yeah, the the outdoor areas for dogs already require a setback. But you could put in a stipulating condition that says, you know, no outdoor play areas. You know, something to that effect. Would it would effectively mitigate that concern?
Yeah, because there is residential nearby and we've had that issue. So I just want to make sure that even though there's no intent to, that doesn't mean that if the property changes hands, somebody couldn't come in and do that down the road. So I want to make sure that the conditions appropriately address that.
I can write a condition for consideration at the next meeting if you would like.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Quickly, it's a great idea. It's fine use. I think we should include lang- language that allows the current applicant to expand, you know, meeting our requirements like for set setbacks and stuff related to their primary business, something like that. Matt, can you draft that for the next meeting? Okay, anybody else?
What does the applicant think with the no board outdoor?
We we have no plan of doing anybody. I mean, we're we're we want to do the hospital that is in front of us.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll see this again on November tenth. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Sharon, whenever you're ready.
Item number five is a resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty six. For each fund of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, pursuant to Article Five, Section Five of the Charter of the City, beginning January one twenty twenty six and ending December thirty first twenty twenty six. Appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources. Richard Planet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first public hearing for the twenty twenty six budget. I would jump right into the presentation. It's just a couple of slides on giving an overview of the budget. Budget was published on August twenty seventh, as required by the charter. It had to be published by the end of August. That gives everybody a full two months to review. And if not approved by November first, then this budget would go into effect. To give a very brief synopsis of where, how many meetings we've had, where we've been, kind of a calendar with the budget. This was, as I said, the budget was published August twenty seventh. There was a workshop held on September twenty ninth. There was a CIP or Capital Improvement Plan focused meeting that was held on October sixth. This is the first public hearing today on August, sorry, October fourteenth, and the second public hearing will be on October twenty seventh. So as with the twenty twenty five budget, there is no use of fund balance in the twenty twenty six budget either. So both years currently show no use of fund balance. And it's really on a very high level. It's a combination of digest growth and control of expenses. That's really allowed us to weather the storm, so to speak, post COVID without ever having used reserves. So the main focus of the rest of this presentation will be on the general fund. So we're going to, or this, these first couple of slides will show the budget as is basically. Toward the end, we'll have a slide with the amendment that has been talked about that'll show the impact the amendment would have and what the amendment would be. But this is the as is budget, so to speak. So unassigned fund balance at the start of twenty twenty four was twenty six point four million dollars. Revenues in twenty twenty four were thirty six million with offset by expenses of thirty two point eight million dollars. So we added three and a half million dollars to fund balance and ended twenty twenty four with twenty nine and a point nine billion dollars and unassigned fund balance a little bit over eleven months of reserve. That was about thirteen point eight million dollars above the six month reserve. The fund balance policy states four to six month as the target for the reserve. So the twenty twenty five budget is revenues thirty seven million dollars and expenditures equal thirty seven million dollars. So we're expecting to finish twenty twenty five at twenty nine and point nine million dollars in unassigned fund balance. That's a shade under ten months reserve, eleven point eight above the targeted six month reserve. And then for this twenty twenty six budget, thirty eight million dollars in revenue, offset by thirty seven point four in recurring expenditures, one time expenditures of five hundred and seventy thousand. That's thirty eight million dollars there. So again, we're forecasting to end with twenty nine point nine in fund balance, nine point six months reserve, which is eleven point two million dollars above the six month reserve. From a revenue perspective, twenty twenty four revenue was thirty five point three million dollars and we had some, we had couple, a little bit of sale of assets, mainly vehicles and things like that. And then we had a transfer in from ARPA, the federal funds of one million dollars. So again, twenty twenty four was thirty six point four million dollars in revenue. The budget for twenty twenty five shows thirty five million dollars in revenue. So let's say transfer in from ARPA two of two million dollars. That's how we get to the thirty seven million in twenty twenty five. And then the twenty twenty six budget, thirty eight million dollars. As you'll notice, there's no transfer in from ARPA or anything like any additional federal funds or anything. Our approach to the budget from a revenue perspective this year was to really focus on twenty twenty four actuals and those trends increases, decreases that we've seen and then kind of factor that two times basically to not only forecast what we think twenty twenty five will be, but also extrapolate that into twenty twenty six as well. So some of the, while still conservative, some of the conservatism has been removed from this budget. We're still very comfortable with the revenue number, though, of thirty eight million dollars for twenty twenty six. Just to highlight a couple of them, you'll notice the very first line, property taxes, that's three point five percent. That's the forecasted growth in the digest. We've seen a continued trend with seven point seven million, sorry, seven point seven percent a couple of years ago. This past year is about five percent. So we've got it at three and a half percent this year. Franchise fees, the the main growth there is in the Georgia Power franchise fee. They're the bulk of that. We continue to see strong investment income as well in and hotel motel tax, working with Discover Dunwoody, they're forecasting about a three percent increase next year. So we factored that in as well as the motor vehicle rental tax. From an expense perspective, our largest department is the police department that's in the purple down there. Just a shade under forty percent of the total general fund budget is for the police department, thirty eight point one percent. So there's a couple of large, other large departments there. When you factor in Public Works, Parks and Rec and Information Technology, those are our four largest departments with with police. That is just about seventy percent of the general fund operating expense budget. Sixty eight point nine percent to be exact. Those are both similar to what we've seen in twenty twenty five with PD being about forty percent and those four largest funds being about seventy percent. So it continues the trend that we've seen this year. That continues into twenty twenty six. Debt service, about three point six percent and then capital one time expenditures about a percent and a half. So all the other remaining departments besides the ones that I've named are about twenty six percent of the remaining budget. So another way to look at the expense side is by category. So this show consolidates all the departments and shows it in broader categories. You'll notice the dark blue category that takes up almost half of the pie is personnel costs. So that includes salaries, benefits, retirement, anything like that for the city employees. That is fifty five percent. There is another slice that's orange down there, which we label official admin services. That's our contract cost. So that's seven percent. So when you factor in those two, that's about sixty two percent people related cost for the twenty twenty six budget. A couple of other items to point out, property and liability insurance is two percent. Our debt service is four percent. So that's six percent of the budget. That leaves of the remaining categories about thirty one percent or eleven point six million dollars of the total budget. That's non people cost, non property liability insurance and debt service related. The last slide for twenty twenty six regard is for capital funding. So this pie chart here shows just the twenty twenty six portion. We do adopt a CIP, a CIP plan as part of the budget. So that would be for twenty six to twenty thirty. However, this pie here just shows the capital allocation for twenty twenty six. As you may recall, there's three large buckets of funding that we have for our capital hotel motel, which is can be spent on tourism related projects. Sploesd is our largest capital piece and that is can be spent based on the referendum. So it can't be spent for operations or anything like that. But can, majority of it can be spent transportation related projects as well as public safety and some repairs and maintenance. And then the general capital project is really where we transfer in any any remaining operating general fund operating dollars or anything to fund those projects. So the twenty twenty six total capital budget again, just for that year is about twenty point six million dollars. Public works is about sixty five percent of that when you add all of their funds together. Sploesd two, Sploesd one, hotel motel and general capital. Parks is about twenty two percent. And then really you get into smaller public safety is about eleven percent of that budget. And then IT has a very small two percent of the twenty twenty six budget. So which coincides with how the referendum was approved for our Sploesd where approximately eighty five percent of the budget was geared for Sploesd was related to transportation projects. So the next slide shows the general fund with the amendment that was included in the packet that was as part of this agenda item. So as you may recall, we'll we'll finish, we're forecasting to finish the year at twenty nine point nine million dollars, nine point six million dollars or eleven point two above the six month reserve. We had a proposed amendment of seven million dollars. On the right hand side would show how that seven million dollars would be spent, five hundred thousand dollars for police equipment, five million for the build out of Homecoming Park, five hundred thousand for pedestrian safety projects and a million dollars for sidewalks. So factoring that seven million dollars into the equation, so to speak, the new ending fund balance would be twenty nine, I'm sorry, twenty two point nine million dollars, which would leave months above reserved about seven point three six months. And the excess over the six month reserve is still about four point two million dollars. So that amendment is in your budget and real quickly, we've talked about all these in our previous meeting, but just to lay out what is included in each one of these amendments. For Homecoming Park, there's five million dollars. Listed on the screen are the items that would be included in that build out, Wildflower Meadow, Open Playfield, Half Mile Nature Trail, Reston Pavilion with solar panels, a twelve thousand square foot inclusive playground, sand volleyball courts, sensory garden and a community space building with solar panels as well. So that five million dollars would go toward the build out of Homecoming Park. At least we get five hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand I would go to their to the drone with another hundred and seventeen thousand for the electric vehicles that we're still working with the federal government to see if we can get the grant funds for. But if we cannot get those, then this would be able to pay for those. And then another hundred and eighty three thousand dollars to assist the police with the aging vehicle fleet that they have. For pedestrian safety is five hundred thousand dollars there. They've identified five projects, Vanderland at Hensley, crosswalk bulb outs, Dunwoody Village Park and Intersection Safety, Womack at Vermac, bulb out, Tillamale at Dunwoody Glen, crosswalk realignment and then audible pedestrian push buttons at ten intersections. And then last would be for sidewalks. The they've identified three projects here, Shambly Dunwoody sidewalk, which is strolling drive to Oak Point Place, Peeler Road sidewalk, Huntington Hall to Equestrian Way and the Vermac sidewalk, Womack to Parliament. And that is all I have.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's objections. Seeing no objections, I will open the floor for comments for those in opposition. You'll have ten minutes if you want to line up in the middle to the budget. If anyone would like to speak in a opposition to the budget. Okay, if anyone would like to speak in favor of the budget. Okay. I see no comments. I will close the public hearing unless there's an objection and then I guess, Richard, you can come back. I did close the public hearing. I didn't quite say it exactly right. Questions, comments? Catherine.
Yes, I have a comment. I I'm looking at the capital transfer amount that you said it's that you recommended at seven million dollars. When I asked the various groups if they had any additional requests, the police came up with two hundred and forty three thousand for the bulletproof glass, the front of the cars. What you're gonna have in excess is a four point two three five, you know, two hundred and thirty five thousand is almost that amount. I would like to add to the seven million this two hundred and forty three thousand requests from the police.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to clarify with chief. So that that funding would would that outfit all of the police vehicles with the ballistic glass? That would outfit all of the marked police vehicles with the ballistic glass.
That would just be the front glass.
That's correct, ma'am.
Is that considered best practice? Just the front glass? Is that what most people, I don't even really like to talk about?
Yeah, no, I can get, they do have additional for the side. The side front driver and passenger windows as well. I can add, I can check on that quote as well.
So what happens when we replace the cars, I guess? Is it less expensive to order the cars with it in or is it always like has to be done by somebody special?
So this is actually going to be done by can't think of the name of the company.
That's okay. You don't have to name, but.
So this is an aftermarket product.
Okay.
I don't know if Ford is offering that with with the purchase week. I can definitely look into that, but right now.
I just meant that because it would be an ongoing, which is fine. It's really important. Just wanted to make sure I understood the process. Go ahead.
So just to continue on that, I know we spoke at the, we had our work session. Do you, do we have lessons learned? We know some other departments that have gone through this process that we're looking to do, chief, with these windshields in the region.
I can't name specific agencies that are going through it. I saw the at the GACP conference, they were down there. Dana Supply, I just, it just came to me. Down there showcasing the window. So the way it works is we can shoot out, but they can't shoot in because that is a possibility. So we need to keep those options open when it comes to lethal force.
And then as it, as it, as it is with any high level budget, we're we're doing the budget now, but when it comes down to it, there would be a go through procurement and then we'd have further details of when that moves forward, when you're gonna that's how that process will work, correct?
Correct. And you know, as with any type of ballistic that including vests, it has a shelf life. It's gonna, it's gonna be the same about the life of the car. So once we, once the car ages out, it's not like we can take that and put it into, I mean, granted, you know, vehicles change size, shape and all that. So but it would stay with the life of the car and then we just, they expire.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
So this is a question for Richard because I know we have in the supporting documents, we have the budget amendment. And then we have the FY twenty twenty six proposed operating capital budget final, but the final doesn't have the amendment in it. So how, what is the timing and when do we? Yeah.
Sure. So vote on the amendment when we vote for the budget next time, October twenty seventh hearing. And then it'll be incorporated in the budget, assuming it gets passed, approved.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Jim.
Just overall, just observe, observation too. I know it was we've gone through a lot from the greater public that may have not been aware. Well, we had a whole, whole day work session or went through this in greater detail. So please, the public, don't think that this is our first time having these conversations. And then we had a whole separate evening just on the capital project. So we really have gone through in quite low level, and we've had chances to have a lot of back and forth and Q and A back to staff. So this has been an iterative process of what you see here in the packet. I do want to note that, you know, pedestrian safety, street safety for all users is, is one of my paramount aims of being on council, and we are doing that. And when you look at what's in this amendment, also look at what's currently in our five year capital improvement program that's projected. We have for sidewalks, projects, et cetera, we have five point two million dollars already set aside on current projects of, then include sidewalk projects. And then there's other roadway projects that have those things as well, and they're all about adding in the traffic calming and so on. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty proud of what we are doing as a city within our means of safety for all. And just thank you all.
Okay, so Richard, so we had a really good year last, oh wait, was anybody else? Okay, it's fine. We had a really good year last year, right? But it's the first really good year we've had since I've been mayor, right? Because I started and then the pandemic happened. So we're hopeful that it will continue. But I'm still not convinced that we're on easy street. And I just want to say that because I don't, I'm not looking forward to spending the entire reserves. I think for up to four months, even six months makes me a little apprehensive. And I, when I was preparing for a different, to speak to a group last, a couple of weeks ago, I was looking at property taxes, and can we share that slide?
Yeah, I think I T has it.
Okay, if they don't have it, then we move on. Okay, can they hear me? Okay, so in the chart, it showed that property taxes make up about three and a half percent of our budget. Is that correct? Because I don't have it in front, oh, actually, I do have it in front of me. That might be wrong. Hold on. They make up about, oh, there was a three and a half percent change. They make up much more, how much, what percent of our budget or so?
About a third.
About a third. Okay, yes, that's right. Not three, right third. So I thought I would look at what we pay in Dunwoody. You know, when the city was founded, there were two schools of thought, I believe. One was we were paying to have too much money, period. We wanted to spend less. There was a second thought that we could deliver better services for the same money. That was the other thought. I think that was the thought that the people that founded the city went with. So I've always been a little curious about how much money were, what the difference is from being in Dunwoody and unincorporated to cab. So for this exercise, these are real properties. And it shows you how much money, same value houses. And I did a combination of city and county taxes so that it's comparable. Because some cities like Sandy Springs provide fire. And we don't all have exactly the same services. But, but when you combine the city and the county, you get the same services. Because everybody, there's a base in a metro, in our world anyway, everybody has very, not similar service delivery, not similar quality of services, but the similar services. When you have the county and your police, your fire, your B M S, all that. So this is, I don't know what the average price of a home in Dunwoody is. These houses all have freezes from about a decade ago or a little more at this point. They're very similar in value, except Sandy Springs is actually a little bit less because I only know so many people in Sandy Springs. I could only look at so many houses. And that's the closest I could get. But you'll see that we're delivering a, a, a fair amount of services to our residents for significantly less than our neighbors and unincorporated to cab. So when I look at my own bill, and I'm one person, and I have a friend in unincorporated to cab, and our homes up until recently have been worth about the same thing. And pretty much on average, I'm paying, I paid about seven or eight hundred dollars less a year in my overall, my combined county and city taxes, which means that since incorporation, we probably have saved ten, eleven thousand dollars, maybe ten. I don't know. I can't do the math. But we aren't. And I understand that people, that there's a lot of resentment and frustration with property taxes. We had hoped that the state would give us an option to have a municipal sales tax. Didn't happen, doesn't seem likely anytime soon. And so, but I just wanted to show that I believe the founders of the city, that we have, they, they, not me, I wasn't part of it, that we have lived up to delivering better services and actually for less money. Because if my, if this first house was in unincorporated to cab, you'd be paying, they'd be paying eight hundred dollars more a, a year in property taxes. And if you happen to be over the line in Sandy Springs, you'd be paying more than that. So, or Shambly down the street. So anyway, that was just my, I went down a rabbit hole and wanted to show that. And that extends to our business community. Because the six point five mils or the four point seven three mils, that applies to the business communities in those cities as well. So, you know, I, I commend our staff. We made a few small cuts or a few cuts in this budget, so things are not coming back. But I commend our staff for how hard we work. If you want, I can come back next month with a, how much we spend per resident versus other cities or our staffing, any, let me know. I'll do it for you. But we do a lot with a little. And it, it may not feel like a little, but, and I know Chief is working hard to fill those positions in the police department. And then when we fill them, we'll come back and get more, and after that, we'll get more. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on this budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that comes back in two weeks.
Correct, yes.
All right, we can turn the slide off. All right, next is consent. Are there any questions or comments on consent?
Before, before we go off, just.
Oh, sorry, I should have, yeah.
I guess an administrative question on if, do we need to formally amend this budget? And we'll do that before we adopt it at the next meeting or?
Yes, at the next meeting, not today.
Clarify for people that are following, that's kind of the stuff. Thank you.
Consent agenda, any questions or comments, Joe?
Just want to make a note of that we have the meeting schedule incorporated in here. And I just want to highlight that and bring it to note, everybody, to make sure you look at it. Because in twenty twenty five, or twenty twenty five, we have two, we had two, we have two meetings in December, but we habitually have normally only have one. So I just want everybody to understand, and next year, twenty twenty six, we are going back to the one meeting in December. So if you happen to note that, I'm just letting people to know, there's one meeting next year in December. We had two this year. And the other, the other meeting schedule, just in general, I guess Steph is fine with, with the, the day after Memorial Day. Do we have other folks that, other cities, are they like a lot of folks on vacation that week for staff? Is that a workload, Eric, that week of Memorial Day? Do you know, folks, is it a staff burden? Would, I know it's not a, for children, there's now, a school's still in, that's the last week of school.
Let's pull that from the agenda. I didn't catch that. And so to pull it from the agenda, we'll need a motion to amend the consent agenda.
Move, move to, so we're just, are we going to remove it altogether, ma'am?
Yeah, remove it from the agenda, period. So.
Make a motion to remove item number ten out of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of removing the calendar meeting schedule from the agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, now we're back to the consent agenda as amended.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by Tom. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. All right. Do I, you need to read this one, Sharon, or can I read it? I don't know. Moving to business items, action items. Number thirteen is adoption of the twenty twenty five, twenty forty five comprehensive plan, Richard McLeod.
Good evening. We have been working since June of twenty twenty four on this comprehensive plan. I want to thank the steering committee who gave numerous hours in dedication to this. So we are ready for the approval of the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty four, excuse me, twenty forty five comprehensive plan. Both the Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission have commented.
You want to fix the way it looks on the screen? Sorry.
Which button do I press?
Thank you.
All right, I'll start over. Since June of twenty twenty four, we've been working on the comprehensive plan. I want to thank the steering committee for their hours and hours of hard work on this. Both the Department of Community Affairs and the Lead of Regional Commission have commented on it. They had very few comments. We've updated the plan to reflect those comments. Plus, we've incorporated council comments from the last public hearing in August. I want to introduce Allison Stewart Harris, and she was going to take us through a brief tour of this.
Great, thank you, Richard. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We are not going to go through page by page like we did last time. We will have a very brief overview, just a reminder of the process that we have gone through. I will touch on a number of the changes that we've made since I was last here in July. And then we'll wrap up with some next steps and what implementation will look like. So as Richard mentioned, the state of Georgia has approved your comprehensive plan draft. We have met and exceeded all of these standards that were set in place. And just a reminder, the city of Dunwoody deadline for adoption of your plan is October thirty first. Since we last saw you, we have made your edits from the last hearing. We have revised that document. We sent that on to the Atlanta Regional Commission and to D C A for review. As Richard mentioned, they had a few minor edits that they requested of us, and we are here tonight for you to formally adopt the plan. This is just a quick calendar of what some of those requirement touch points were. As Richard mentioned, we have been working on this since last summer or so. And we are now in this sort of red box here for adoption assistance. I do want to make sure y'all are aware of the changes that we have made since I was last here. Got five major policy changes to, to review with y'all. The first one, we had a lot of conversation about that yellow area of the stoplight. One of the big changes that we made was we really defined what that yellow area meant. And so it is now stated very clearly that uses in that yellow box are appropriate if approved through the special land use permit process. The second major policy change, and actually the next few are very similar. There was a lot of conversation over some of the more intensive uses that were in the green category. So we had a lot of discussion over which ones of those should be probably moved down to yellow. So we moved multi-unit residential from green to yellow in the following character areas. Perimeter core, Georgetown East, Winter's Chapel core and Peachtree Boulevard. Similarly, we moved mixed use from green appropriate to yellow appropriate if approved through SLUP in the following character areas, perimeter core and transition, Dunwoody Village core, Georgetown West core, Winter's Chapel core, Jet Berry and Peachtree Boulevard. Similarly, we moved the senior and assisted living use from green to yellow in a large number of character areas. So both of the character areas for perimeter core, Dunwoody Village, Georgetown West, Woodrow Chapel, but also Georgetown East, Jet Berry, Ashford, Peachtree Boulevard and Civic Campus. Finally, the, the fifth major policy change that we made was we had had Brook Run Park as its own character area. That got dissolved and has been reabsorbed into the suburban neighborhoods' character area, which is similar to what your current plan has. We did have a couple of more minor changes that I wanted to call some attention to. We remove, we moved regional commercial to yellow in the perimeter core. We moved local commercial to medium in yellow to Jet Berry. We moved public institutional to yellow and civic campus. And we also removed North Peachtree Road from the neighborhood transition areas. There are a couple of other minor changes that y'all had requested. There were some language changes regarding some of the implementation items. We fixed any of the errors that y'all had requested. We removed the bike share item from the work program. We add some language regarding vision for pollution and with quantifiable goals. And we did update the overall land use table to reflect all the revisions that we made to those stoplights. We had a couple of changes that were requested by D C A in the community work program. They're primarily formatting changes, so we went ahead and made those. And the state approved your plan on September tenth, twenty twenty five. In terms of the next steps, um, tonight's ask is for y'all to consider formally adopting the plan. And our next step as your consultant team is to really start digging into your code. We've, we've heard some more about that tonight, some of the changes that people would like to see. So we're on top of that. We've been taking notes. And here's where we are in your, your ordinance process. So we are about halfway through. Like this calendar shows, we will be working on the ordinance development through spring of next year and looking to adopt late next year. And this is just a more detailed timeline of what that schedule looks like. Is get, again, we've been doing this as part of a joint process with your comprehensive plan and your U D A. We're over halfway through. So I know that was very brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have either about the adoption process, the comprehensive plan, or our next steps with the ordinance.
Anybody have questions? I do. Okay, so when we last left, and I am trying hard to find it in this document, but I am struggling. We had, we did leave Georgia State or Georgia perimeter, Georgia State campus and the J C C as civic campuses. But we left First Baptist Church as what, please?
First Baptist Church. Believe that was in a different character area.
It wa- oh, yeah.
Altogether, right?
It was in Georgetown, East, Georgetown East, yes.
Yes.
Okay, but is there underlying zoning that we changed or recommended changing? What did we do in terms of future, projection of future land use for that property, anything?
So we have not changed any zoning. That's not the intent of the comprehensive plan. One thing that's important to note is that your land use policy approach is based off of character areas, which are primarily geographies and not land uses. So that, that particular church not being part of Civic Campus is a geographical.
Okay.
Issue as opposed to a land use.
So it's R one hundred right now under it, at First Baptist, I'm pretty sure. And R something, that's probably R one hundred. It remains R one hundred in this plan.
The plan has not changed anybody's.
Right. Is Richard here or right here? God, in front of me. Sorry. All right, so I was really uncomfortable when we left the other day, but what we're saying, whenever we last saw this, what we're saying is, is it because they join the J, pretty much the J C C and the community college, to your college, they're considered civic campuses because they're in the same character area?
Right, so character areas are based off of geography. So areas with similar character are grouped together. So because you have a number of institutional uses that are clustered together in the middle of your suburban neighborhoods, we thought that was significant enough to create its own character area and not call out specifically land uses all around the city, which goes back to your current approach, which is having a land use map and a character area map, which is.
Okay, so nothing has changed on the land use map for the large, large church on the access road, correct?
So just to clarify, there is no longer a featureland use map.
Right, okay.
Yes, so yes, the, the character area has not changed, the zoning has not changed on any person.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It says Georgetown East, fixed error regarding Dunwoody Baptist Church.
Oh, yeah, that should be First Baptist Church.
First Baptist.
So the, the error was fixed in the document that said over half of the character area was that.
Oh, I see what, yes, because it is. And, okay. All right. Anything else? Any other questions? Right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Moved by Catherine.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
The next item is a contract amendment. I'm sorry, is not. It's authorization for the mayor to execute an estoppel certificate as presented related to SHG Dunwoody LLC, which is required per the previously closed, closed sale agreement with the city of Dunwoody and the city attorney will.
You ready?
And are you pressing?
Yeah, I'm doing it. So whenever y'all sold that property to A, I think it's SHG. Let me get it named correctly. SHG Dunwoody LLC. You obtained a non-exclusive parking access easement on the property for your park that's across the street or right next door to them. And as part of that sale transaction, there was a, an estoppel requirement that should they ever need an estoppel certificate for a future buyer or for themselves that y'all would agree to execute it. We sent this to Andy Meyer, our closing attorney who's reviewed it, says that there is a legal requirement in the contract and that the documents are satisfactory to him. We've checked to make sure there's no breach of the permanent non-exclusive access and parking easement agreement. In other words, it's still in play on our behalf. And so the only reason, this normally could have just been signed uh, by the mayor because it was already authorized in a prior contract, but I wanted there to be a record of it in the minutes. That's why we put it on the agenda. So it's been blessed by legal, blessed by our real estate closing attorney. We've run by staff to make sure there's no exceptions to the, our parking rights over there, and it's prop, the property is either probably being refinanced or sold is my guess is the reason why they want it.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I don't think I quite get what estoppel means. I'm not a lawyer. And I looked it up, but it wasn't too helpful. This is the twenty twenty three agreement that you want us to authorize?
No, the, the first agreement's already authorized. It's recorded in the real estate record book. The, the estoppel certificate is not dated. It's the second document that should have been in your thing. And essentially, all it says is the city has not given any notices that the grantor is in default into that contract. To the knowledge of the city, the easement has not been supplemented, modified, or amended in any way. It's the document that's on the record in the Cav County Courts. To the knowledge of the city, easement is in full force and effect. And that they're relying on the fact that there's no litigation about that easement to do some transaction. So there's a certificate that's, that's on my pad, should be with y'all's. The first thing is just showing your rights to your parking that's recorded. That's from the transaction that's already occurred. We're just showing you the basis of why the certificate is being asked for. But there should be a certificate attached to your.
Yeah, I'm looking at the certificate. Okay.
And just into your microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the definition of estoppel.
Yeah, what is the estoppel? That's what, asking.
What is the definition of estoppel? A, a estoppel, and I'm gonna just say it in seventh grade terms, allow somebody to proceed knowing that we're not asserting some right they don't know about by virtue of our parking easement over there. In other words, they're in compliance. They just want to know that the seller is in compliance or the, the borrower is in compliance with the agreement with the city.
Okay. All right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Moved by, um.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Uh, that cast carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Michael Smith.
Good evening. This item is for a contract with Big Apple Services for traffic sign replacement. A number of years ago, there were some federal guidelines adopt, adopted that require a minimum reflectivity of traffic signs so people can see them at night. And so we've, over the years, been replacing a few, some signs every year. We have over four thousand signs in the cities and at the, the cost that it is to replace them. I mean, it's about, it's over a million dollars if we were to replace every sign in the city. So we try to do a little bit each year. We're monitoring the reflectivity for some of the older signs we've replaced. There's a map in the packet that shows the areas of the city that we've, we've done replacements in. Earlier this year, the council set aside two hundred thousand of the additional L-Meg money we got to go ahead and replace more signs. And so, but with that money, that amount of money at one time, we've typically handled this by using our regular sign and signal maintenance contractor to do, do them throughout the year. But for a big quantity like this, which it would be better to contract specifically for that. Just so happens Brookhaven within the last year did a similar thing and bid this out. And Big Apple was the, uh, the low bidder on that contract. And so we're proposing to use those same unit rates for the next year replacing signs in Dunwoody. We're asking for three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand coming from L-Meg, and then if we have money available next year, we'd use a hundred thousand of our normal operating maintenance budget to continue to replace more signs into the twenty twenty six calendar year.
Uh, Catherine.
Michael, the way this looks to me, twenty twenty five L-Meg is what you want this money for?
Yeah, yes.
So this whole western side.
Right, yeah, on the map, I labeled, um, the areas that I think we can do with the two hundred thousand from, that was set aside from L-Meg. You know, if we can do more next year with the, an additional hundred thousand out of our operating budget, we'll, we'll do some more of the areas that aren't shown on the map. Like in the central part of the city.
Well, I love clean new signs, so I'm very excited. This is my neighborhood. Thank you.
Uh, Joe.
Michael, um, perhaps we could have a separate conversation, just refreshing just the L-Meg in itself by itself. Because I'm, our current forecast for twenty twenty six budget, I've got the CIP for that. That shows that we're going to have a total revenue approximately of five hundred and sixty four K for twenty twenty six. It shows that.
Right, so every year for, since we've been a city, we get a set aside amount from the state from the state gas tax, which they call L-Meg. We've, it, um, it's based on road mileage and population. Every year, we've set that aside for, I did, to supplement our paving because it's you know, really easy and a quick way to spend the money. The two hundred thousand that I'm talking about from L-Meg. So we did that again this year for paving. But then the last few years, the state has had a surplus in this fund. And I think this is the second or third year. They've come back, said, hey, there's going to be additional L-Meg money. And so when we found out this year about that, I think it was back in April or May, we came to the, or maybe June, came to the council, said we propose to use some of that. It was about six hundred thousand. Some of it was for paving, two hundred thousand for sign replacement. And then there was a hundred thousand, I think, for, um, refreshing road striping. So that's, that's where this two hundred thousand is coming from.
I, I, I get, I get that. What I would prefer, I know that this, here's, we're, we're receiving recommendations from staff. And I think potentially at the retreat, maybe we just have a, here's everything we can use for L-Meg. And have it just a conversation, starting with a blank sheet of paper of what we could talk about priority wise for this extra funding. I know in twenty twenty six, we put of that L-Meg funding, we put four hundred forty four thousand to the safety action plan. Roadway safety. Um, I'm a big roadway safety person. I'm a big roadway safety person, you know, and if we could put more sidewalks and, and more strip, traffic, traffic calming and more, more of those kind of things in. I'd like to do that as, 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 as more of a priority. Obviously signage is a, okay, gotta have it. Do it operationally wise, but, um, I'd like to see the L-Meg pie and what we're really looking at dividing that up on an annualized basis, um, is, is the conversation on that. That's part one. And part two is, um, the sign contract, um, this is a specific question. If, if we, we need a separate sign that's not in that bid form. I did a search. For instance, a constituent just asked recently if we can get rid of the share of the road signs and say bicycle may use full lane. Um, that's MUTCD sign. Um, I could imagine that we could just have them procure that. Um, and in Roswell, they have locally produced signs. They'll, they'll produce some things on Canton Street and so on. Would we, would that be independent outside of this contract? If we have anything that we need to produce locally, you would just do that outside of this contract?
Yeah, well, yes. Well, we still plan to use our sign and signal maintenance contractor to do kind of one offs, you know, like a stop sign gets knocked down, has to be replaced. For signs that aren't on the list, I think, because a lot of it's based on the size, the cost, a lot of it's based on the size of the sign. So I think we can either find a close match on the list or there is a category for custom sign per square foot that we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I'll leave it to the rest of my peers if they think about what we, just big picture L-Meg, what that pie looks like and how we divide it up and put priorities to it.
I actually get complaints about traffic signs. And so they, I think, I mean, when I drive around, I'm kind of wondering how we're, um, if we're, I know that my predecessor did like clean the sign days, and I kind of think maybe we need to get back to that. Because there are dirty signs.
And we do, uh, sometimes it is just a matter of cleaning the sign. And so when we get notified about a sign like that, we do send our, uh, maintenance people out to clean it.
Yep, okay.
Well, the, the street signs, the newer street signs have reflective all the way around the border of the sign. That's a very different and better sign.
Yes, I'm not arguing, but in the meantime, there are signs that are dirty and hard to read, that could be cleaned while they wait their turn to be replaced.
I have been out there.
And I know you have. On the ladder. Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, just, just building on something that Joe said a minute ago, which is, you know, while we're out replacing and updating signs, I, I've also gotten, um, feedback from residents about, you know, bikes may use the full lane, you know, no passing. You know, where we've got traffic calming and, um, it may be clear or no truck signs um, for some of the residential streets. So I think it would be nice as we're doing kind of the sign refreshers, we go ahead and incorporate those while we're doing that. And then just kind of a question for the future, not really related to this, but then maybe we could get PCID to be involved in some way, but you know, eliminated street signs may be in the perimeter area, something to make it easier at night for people to see, oh, that's the street I want to turn on. Just not related to this. I'm just thinking of it kind of free will right now. But anyway, just, just a couple of points. Thank you.
Yes, and we, we do, um, like when we're going through, particularly on the, the busier roads, when we're doing a sign replacement, we do take a look at, because sometimes signs do become outdated or conditions change or things need to be updated. So we do try to take a look at that and say, okay, we don't just need to blanket replace what's there. Let's think about whether that still makes sense or not.
Uh, okay, so this is not an action item. This is just.
No, we'll, we'll bring it back next time.
Okay, thank you. All right, solar update, Mr. Venicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will wind up your evening for you with a delightful topic of solar energy. This is just a small update from a previous discussion we had in the past. I want to first say part of this is to also publicly thank Ann Hicks with the Sustainability Committee who's working with us on this. And without her help, we could not get to where we are right now. Just to give some background, um, city council has, and the Sustainability Committee has always advocated the use of renewable energy sources or similar actions where appropriate. Uh, we gave a presentation in July twenty eighth on city council, and this is to update you on where that stands now. And to keep it pretty short, we're developing an RFP, uh, in cooperation, our purchasing department and Ann, and she's got a background in it and worked with Dunwoody UMC on their version of this. On installing solar power, uh, uh, crew tremonts, as I like to call them privately, at the annex and at the Art Center Library locations, along with incorporating them to do constructions we go along. City is focusing on financing where there's little or no upfront investment, where the company installs the solar equipment and the city approaches electricity from them based off usage at a fixed cost. Sustainability Committee has discussed internally about recommending CIPA or solar release on this, which we discussed back in July. Right now, we have a draft version of the RFP. We're going back and forth, just getting the, the smaller details worked out and hope to get that out on the street in the next two weeks with, uh, having them back to city council for approval of an alternative in January of twenty twenty six and finishing construction by June of twenty twenty six. And again, this is just to give you a timeline update to let you know it's moving forward. Um, again, I publicly want to thank Ann for all the help that she's done with this on this.
Yes.
And if I jump in and just add a few more details here. So just a, a little bit of background on why we picked the two buildings that we did. You know, basically, we're, we're working with a little bit of a, a timeline squeeze to make sure that we're able to access some incentives. And so, um, the Sustainability Committee, you know, talking to staff and kind of looked at what were, were the, what we consider the easiest buildings to do quickly. And so, um, Spruell Center and the Annex were identified as have, you know, relatively open roofs and good shape, um, so easy to work with. This, doing these two buildings doesn't preclude us from doing something at other buildings in the future, but our thought was let's get, you know, nice easy sites first and then, and then look to go on. One other question that they asked me to raise while we're looking at this, um, is whether or not we want to include battery storage of solar energy for either of these sites. It provides some nice benefits, but that would entail upfront cost, whereas the approach of just the solar usage power would be ideally no upfront cost, and we would just get a reduced energy cost. So just.
I wonder if there's opportunity for a partnership with DEMA or G, well, DEMA about to be, if, if we could have the batteries in the event of needing it as a evacuation or.
And batteries can be added at any point.
Okay, all right, just not worry about it then, then. So when will we see this?
Yeah, well, with the RFP will go on the street, there's nothing.
Oh, nothing to do, right, okay.
The, the plan ideally, hopefully, you know, that we give a thumbs up is around the end of the month, we get the RFP out, um, and then what about six weeks for? Uh, yeah, even thirty days. Thirty days. And then there would be a, um, a review team, which would include some folks from the Sustainability Committee that have some experience with this.
You would see this again in January development.
Yeah, and then once, once we had.
That's okay, I got it, got it. All right.
So I just, um, in general, yeah, it's a great first start. Thank you for the work and the staff putting forward this together. Thank you for Rob for being our newly, you know, liaison to this committee and helping move this forward. And I'm, I'm glad to see this moving. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Public comment. I have two cards. Zach Humphries approached the microphone, sir, and y'all have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, so now we have the twenty twenty five to forty five comprehensive plan just passed. In the age of scarcity with rising costs and stagnant wages, we either share or steal our stagnant, uh, slices of pie. Dunwoody is in an age of scarcity. We don't have companies trying to move into our office buildings empty. Because for some of them, they'd have to pay seven times the effective rate of city contributing, uh, property taxes. Just financially doesn't make sense for them. So now Dunwoody is proposing this, uh, just passed, a tentative plan to redevelop Dunwoody to pump money into its ailing pockets in the same way that the Spurls allowed for the redevelopment of the Greater Dunwoody to pump money into their ailing po- pockets. So the question is, what will this new Dunwoody look like? I think many involved in this plan have a blind optimism that this will be a diverse group of people that maybe even those in South Dunwoody will be able to buy this new residential housing and live here permanently. I do not share this naive optimism. With the theft of the wealth of South Dunwoodyans through inequitable taxes, the cost of living crisis, the dismantling of civil rights and DEI policies, the firing of government employees and ICE detaining our citizens. How do you think South Dunwoody is doing in this age of scarcity? Do you really think that the renters, and I'm pretty sure it's the twelfth most expensive city in Georgia, have enough for a down payment? How about enough for stability for a thirty year mortgage? The naive optimism of the twenty twenty five to forty five comprehensive. The naive optimism of the 2025 to 45 comprehensive plan worries me. With our national and state governments stacking the deck against marginalized people, the new, these new residents of Dunwoody will be those deemed supreme by an increasingly supremacist society. Inequitable systems beget inequitable opportunities, beget inequitable income, beget inequitable wealth. Redlining is a great way to leverage inequality to ensure supremacy. That's why the DHA was created in the first place, yet we act surprised when they're fighting for the same now, replacing low-cost elderly housing with high-cost residential housing. The DHA's fundamental ideal, high property values, low property taxes, an underpaid government staff and mainly police to protect against the outsiders hearken back to Dunwoody as Sun downtown. The sun is setting in Dunwoody in this age of scarcity. South Dunwoody residents will be priced out, and they and Dunwoody's contributors will be not permanent in generational wealth. Their existence here lathered, lathered over by gentrification, just as what happened with Stevens Spurles sharecropping tenants in the 1940s and 50s. The sharecropping tenants preferred performance, preferred permanence of ownership over the instability of renting, just like Dunwoody's renting tenants in the Brook Run survey said. If Dunwoody is to avoid this inequitable future, this council must see residents in South Dunwoody.
Thank you, Zach, thank you.
As valid numbers.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch, approach the microphone, sir. You'll have three minutes.
So at the recent court hearing for my case, a lawsuit against the city of Dunwoody, which was a few weeks ago, which was not delayed because your attorney lied and said my attorney was faking his illness. It was interesting that the attorneys that you pay for, Freeman, Mathis, and Gary, they got something right. They told the judge that much of my lawsuit stems from the fact that a Dunwoody police officer in uniform held employees of a store hostage. Those were the words of your attorneys. They said, a Dunwoody police officer held people hostage. So how, how would we know about this? How, how does the public know about this? Do you think during Eric Clinton, our city manager's monthly updates, he's going to read to you and tell you, oh, a Dunwoody police officer held someone hostage? Nope. It's fascinating because open records requests and transparency are fundamental for democracy. And this city council is fighting it every step of the way. You don't care about transparency at all. What have you done to improve transparency? All you do is fight it. It's interesting also because the MO for Dunwoody is to turn a blind eye to employees who violate the law because you support loyalty over legality. You notice, you still have some lawsuits against you from police officers who were fired, fired for whistleblowing. One who tried to tell us about a sexual predator that y'all were protecting and no one in the city wanted to do anything about. Another police officer tried to warn the public about another police officer who was an absolute drunk and crashed his car again. Do you think that we would know about that from our city manager or the emails or mayor, the mayor's comments on Facebook? Nope. Those are all learned and found out because of transparency and open records. You turn a blind eye. You protect Sharon Lowry. Ask Sharon Lowry if she and Eric Shealy and Ginger Page conspired to lie to me about an open records request. Ask her. She did. Why hasn't she sued me, sued me for accusing her of being a criminal? Because she is. She will face the penalties, as will Eric Shealy, who lied, Ginger Page, who lied, and don't forget Eric Linton, who deliberately hid his cell phone so that we couldn't read his email messages. That's dishonest. And what does that make you for turning a blind eye to this? What type of people are you? Do you really think you feel good about your city mayor? You only reward people who are loyal to you, and you don't care about the laws or transparency. It's sick. And what you said about my attorney is disgusting. Shame on y'all.
Uh, city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, we do need an executive session for cybersecurity and litigation.
Thank you. Council comments. Seeing none, I need a motion for executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session for purposes of litigation and cybersecurity.
Second.
Second.
A move by Rob, second by Tom. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none.
Okay.
Get motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All things say aye. Bye-bye. So here's none. But not. All right, put the words on the screen.
Down for three. Twelve forty.
Oh, I don't want to wait them to be shared in the meeting.